I'd like to call this meeting to order, please rise for your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Chick, can you please call roll?
Mr. Roman.
Here.
Ms. Chick is here, Mr. Zarezaki is absent with notice, Mr. Cusnel.
Here.
Mr. Aquinto.
Here.
Ms. Infante.
Here.
And Mr. Dwyer. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I make the motion we adopt the agenda.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Aquinto. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Call to the public. Seeing none, we'll move to clarifications. There should be none. Correspondence? I received none. Ms. Byrd, correct? There's no public hearings tonight. Reports from committees. Start with Board of Trustees, Ms. Chick.
The Board of Trustees met September 25th. There was a presentation reviewing the board's committees, commissions, and commissions within our township government, what their functions are, and the duties they perform. Mr. Lippens, our Township Planner, gave an update on the Lockwood proposal. The board also took comments from the public. Board and public comments regarding the proposal and suggestions on changes will be communicated to the Lockwood developer. The board subsequently requested an update along with financials at an upcoming meeting from Lockwood. The board also directed Mr. Lippens to draft an RFQ for the North Village area to be distributed. The board also listened to a presentation on our wastewater treatment plant, its issues with peak flow, partially treated wastewater, outstanding obligations for REUs and how to resolve the issues. Further discussion on an equalization basis as a solution will continue. The board also approved the conditional use permit for Espiritu Sancti and for Smoky Acres as recommended by the Planning Commission, also the conditional use permit for Peoples' Express. Finally, the board approved a resolution to oppose SB 0637, Small Wireless Communications Facilities Deployment Act, a Senate bill.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, go to ZBA. Mr. Cusnel?
ZBA did not meet since our last meeting.
Thank you. Miss Staff, Ms. Byrd? Planning Consultant, Mr. Lippens?
Yes. The one item, as far as reports or updates that are not on the agenda. At the last Planning Commission meeting, we looked at the Peoples' Express site plan. And the applicant was asked to make revisions to the plan. And one of the questions that was brought up was whether or not asphalt milling would satisfy the township's paving requirement, and/or whether or not a waiver could be granted. And upon reviewing the ordinance, we determined that waivers can only be granted in the agricultural district for paving. And so this site does not qualify. However, we did ask the engineer to go do a site inspection to determine what the condition of the millings were and make a recommendation as to whether or not the millings with bumper blocks, or to outline where the spaces were, could satisfactorily support the intensity of use for those trucks and vehicles being parked on the site. I do, I did get an opinion. They did visit the site. They did issue an opinion that it probably would suffice from an engineering standpoint to support those vehicles. What I would like to do is check back with the engineer on how we would define and interpret paving to make sure that in addition to supporting the vehicle, it is still consistent with the paving requirements. And, you know, I just received that communication today. So I'll be checking with the engineer and providing advice to the applicant on the best way to revise that site plan. Hopefully, I would like to get that onto our next agenda. But one of my questions for Planning Commission was, since our next meeting is planned as a public open house, whether or not we wanted to handle regular business at that meeting? And if so, just how we wanted to conduct it. My hope was that we could informally convene and then essentially have an open house and talk and greet guests as they come in, residents as they come in to provide feedback.
I guess if we could discuss that on your report, because that was one of the questions I had also.
We can. Yep, that's the point of the discussion this evening.
Right.
Outside of that, that's my update on the Peoples' Express, and I can take questions on that as well.
Mr. Aquinto has a question.
Yes, sir, thank you. My question would be, so, is that an aspect of the ordinance that we as a PC could look at so that it not only could read in the ag area, but that a waiver could be granted from the PC in any zoning, you know, if the PC feels it's proper to?
Certainly, I mean, upon review of the ordinance that we're awaiting, so, am I correct, Mr. Lippens?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Cusnel?
I think the fear is always setting precedent, right? And I believe that there was proposed future building exactly where all that paving is going to go. So that would be kind of an unprecedented thing right there in itself. But now it's, we're not granting site plan approval for that future building, but we're at least acknowledging that there is plans to that effect.
No other questions. We'll move on. Parks and Rec's report, Ms. Aquinto?
Yes, thank you. The Parks and Rec has put in a trailway through the downtown park area. It's a one-mile pathway that we cut through vast majority of the wooded area. We completed that this last weekend. We will have signage up in a couple weeks where it'll show to how to walk through it continuously. It'll say one-mile loop. Temporarily, we do have it all marked with yellow caution tape around through it at various points. But it's a nice opportunity for residents now to go to the park and walk through the perimeter of it through a trailway, and it's a very pleasant walk. And we are meeting on the 11th, next Thursday, as a Parks and Rec to start putting together the plan that the township has, Township Board has asked us to. And that meeting would be open to the public. It would be seven o'clock here in this building downstairs. Thank you. The 11th.
Thank you. Downtown Planning Group, Ms. Infante?
I was not there since our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move to new business, a master plan update tentative schedule. Mr. Lippens?
Yes, so there are two things in the packet tonight under the master plan discussion. You know, one, I included the flyer, which I actually did bring some printouts of the flyer, hoping to discuss our agenda for that meeting this evening as well. But I also included a short schedule to show what the overall goals for updating the master plan were and a schedule for completing the update. What I'm proposing is a fairly condensed schedule to match the zoning update. So we do want to get this done fairly quickly. Our workshop will be this month in October. And then I've added to our agenda reporting on the elements that we discussed, including the master plan, the two elements that were special focus areas were a non-motorized plan and creating specific policies for non-motorized infrastructure and a township map, which now can be done in conjunction with looking at the Washtenaw County non-motorized plan that was done by Watts, and the open space preservation plan, which would be a section to support the works for, the work for preservation in the township. Then we have, for January, I put general updates, which is basically the reformatting and updating of the plan, including updating the demographic profile, updating sub-area plans, which is a big thing. We talked about reorganizing the plan, which is now split geographically into four areas of the township into more sub-areas that are around theme. So our downtown plan and North Village plan would be adopted as part of this. But the other specific study areas are the, that we talked about, looking at are the interchange areas. Now with the reconstruction of US 23, it gives us an opportunity to relook at the interchange areas. And then the Whitmore Lake North Territorial Road overlay zone is of particular interest in creating new recommendations. Potentially, that could be then implemented in the current zoning update. So what we would like to do is get the body of this work done and updated for, in time for January. And then the adoption process involves a 63-day public comment period. So hopefully, we would schedule a public hearing with Planning, or we would release, Planning Commission would make a recommendation to Township Board to release the plan for public comment in late January or early February. We would let a 63-day public comment period pass where we would print the plan, post the plan for public comment, and create, collect any comments on the policies and recommendations in the plan. And then in March, or really as soon as that 63-day review period was up, Planning Commission could hold a public hearing, hear from the public in person, and consider adoption of a revised plan. The adoption process I've noted on here can be parallel to the zoning ordinance. So I anticipate that any substantive changes we recommend to the zoning ordinance as part of this process will indeed be consistent with the master plan. And since we're doing them at the same time, we'll have the opportunity to, you know, revise or update the zoning ordinance if we hear anything at this workshop or discover anything in working through the master plan to ensure that indeed the zoning ordinance revisions are consistent with any master plan revisions being proposed, so that they can be adopted in parallel. So I guess I just want to make sure that this schedule is good with Planning Commission. Again, I think it's a little, it's a fast schedule, but we've been working on planning consistently for a while, and I think a lot of the prep work is done. Again, we're building on the public workshops and outreach that were done for the downtown plan and the North Village plan, and extending that into this process as well. Hoping to wrap it up early next year.
Okay. Question. What's the status of the zoning ordinance review or revision?
Well, we finished the audit, and we're working on going through and making changes as discussed. I did not include that schedule in the packet.
Right.
But it was, I believe, scheduled for December meetings this year. Let me double check, because I have my, I have the files right here. Yeah, so we have, our goal is to finish the update of the draft for Planning Commission to review. And this is according to the schedule that we reviewed in July, dated July 27. Review the draft with Planning Commission in December. And we would be looking at incorporating the feedback we get from the master plan in November, which is why doing the open house now is crucial and good that we're able to schedule it. And then the plan is to work with Planning Commission on reviewing that ordinance in January and February and adoption, so that this schedule is parallel and planned to be done along with the master plan update, so both projects can finish at the same time.
I see. So the ZBA, the tentative ZBA decisions, legal issues for this month, is there a status on that? That was according to our July 27 revision?
Mm-hmm, correct. Yeah, I can, I can provide an update on that. It's, it would be something we're working through this month.
Okay. So I guess my, these questions are also directed at what you previously said, or I had a question about what is going to be the format for your, that you have planned for next meeting? The public, one open to the public?
Great. So what I, if, what I wanted to do was run through the idea that we, that I have going and see if it makes sense for Planning Commission. And what we would be doing is in open house format, so if we were doing it, we are doing it with a regular Planning Commission meeting. I think we could convene informally and then just host the open house and then adjourn at the end. So we wouldn't have to sit here and all speak. The idea is that it would be, you know, we would set up posters, you know, take the chairs out, and host an open house like we would any other time, if not a formal meeting. And what I would like to do is have four stations, although one of the stations is kind of long. I think that one of the most valuable things we can get feedback on is desired uses and specific in districts and sub-areas. So what I would like to do is have a map that breaks out the future land use categories, which we might generalize a little bit, and shows where in the township we're talking about. And then asks, has a list of approved uses and encouraged uses, and ask people to actually put dots on the map to say what, what uses they would most likely see as being encouraged in those places. And I think that what we would hope to do is affirm the policies in some districts, but then also, you know, possibly change some policy guidance in other districts. So, you know, I was thinking that we would focus on the Whitmore Lake overlay district, specifically in one map, or kind of one station. We would make the interchanges another station where we would look at the uses around the interchanges. That one would be dedicated generally to the single-family residential areas, which would be a larger scale map, but really be about the protection of single-family residential areas. And then we would do another one about preservation, but show the larger agricultural areas around the township and have people provide feedback on that. And I think if we break it out into those categories, it will be, we'll get useful information for specifically updating the future land use map should we make any changes to districts. And I think that that is really, you know, fundamentally the main business we want to get done in the master plan update, is figure out if any of our districts or uses in the districts should be changing. And that feedback will help us with the zoning update as well. Yes, so that's one of the ideas. You want to talk about that one and then the others?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. The other, that's, I think, the big station, and it's, will probably be, you know, half the room. The other ones that I would like to do, I do like to start and kind of close to the sign-in table, have an open feedback, which I often call, "What's your big idea?" for Northville Township. I've done it at some other events that we've done, but hopefully, we get a cross-section, some new people, or maybe there's some new ideas. And I like to just kind of do a general brainstorm and get people's ideas township-wide. And I feel like that's a good icebreaker too, a good way to get people thinking about the township. I would also like to do probably one exhibit, or it might be two or three boards, where we test and affirm the goals that are included in the 2014 master plan update. So what we want to make sure is that those indeed are the goals, and let people know they're the goals. So what we'll do is we'll put those on a large board and ask people for feedback on those policies. And then the last thing that I think is valuable is doing a design preference survey, which is another tool that I've done, but we'll change it based on, I think, the feedback we need for the master plan. You know, particularly, I think some of the things that we talk about are, that are kind of changing general design characteristics around the township are landscaping and screening preferences, lighting preferences, and also, you know, paving preferences. Get a sense for whether alternative materials are desirable for paving. And I think that that, if we're focusing on screening and landscaping and kind of how sites address the public right of way, would be good, particularly in looking at, for instance, the overlay district, which has design characteristics outside of the use requirements for the district. So those are kind of the four stations, although there'll be multiple feedback for each station. And I, what I wanted to know is if there's kind of big gaps. If Planning Commission has questions that you feel like we need to ask that kind of aren't covered in that framework, I can add some ideas to that.
At this time?
At this time, yeah.
Okay. So just to clarify, you intend to have, we'll have a formal start of a meeting, try to address the issue on Barker Road. That'd be the only agenda item?
Yes. So if, if-
In other words, I don't want to know, we have a notice out to the public already that it's, the, the meeting, you know, October-
Seven, eight-thirty.
Yeah, so I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to overburden the meeting with other issues when we've already sent out the notice that people want to appear for the workshop-type information input for the, for the, for the master plan, so. I don't, for one, I'm speaking for myself. I'd like to hear from the Commission. I don't have an issue if everything's in order with the Peoples' Express site plan. I think there was minor things to do, but as long as it's not lengthy, if it's all ironed out, and I don't think we would have an issue addressing that item. So we would be ending the meeting and then going to an informal workshop-type atmosphere here at the chamber. Correct?
Yeah, so that, that would, if I understand you correctly, that would be another option. We could convene the meeting, open it at seven, conduct one agenda item, and then close it at seven-ten, seven-fifteen, if it, if the agenda item takes a short amount of time, and then actually do the informal meeting, not as part of the Planning Commission meeting?
Correct. That would be my preference, so I'd like to hear from my fellow Commissioners. Mr. Aquinto had questions, I know.
So the first question I had was, are we going to have table format sessions with chairs around them, as we have in the past, where you have the board easels, and those would be the stations?
No, I don't think we're going to do breakout tables.
Okay.
Although we could if, if there are issues that we want to address in that manner. The idea was that this would be an open house, so people could drop in at any time between seven and eight-thirty and provide feedback by kind of going around to exhibits and-
But then we would be at those exhibits to try and explain and-
Yeah.
And, and work with them and get feedback and discuss it with them if they had, if they wanted to discuss it?
Correct, yes. And, you know, also to have other conversations about the plan as well.
Okay.
So, you know, the feedback that you get from talking to residents is something that we can discuss at this, this meeting as well, so.
So I, for one Commissioner, I'm hoping that there's going to be a lot of people that would come to this, because it is being publicized pretty well. I, again, I don't want to put off any important business, but I feel that the applicant could wait till the next meeting. You know, I just, I feel that this is vitally important, and I hate for some residents to come in, see we're conducting business, and then go, "Well, I'm going to leave," because that meeting's going to go long. I know even though we could make a statement that this is going to go quick. But I, for one, would just feel that the public open house is posted from seven, eight-thirty. I think it's important to give that entire meeting to that purpose and, you know, spend that time with the individuals that do come to try and have a good discussion format with them.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
Well, I, I agree. My concern is that people that want to come at seven o'clock, so that they can go home, do whatever they have to do, are going to come in and see that we're having a meeting and not be able to participate, so. And we did advertise, we should, if we wanted to do that, we probably should have put a notice that, you know, that the, the open house will start at seven-fifteen. I just think it's going to be confusing for the public, and I want to give them every opportunity to participate in the open house. I also had a comment, when we did the last master plan, we had stations with the sub-areas on them, but we also allowed every person to come in to tell us what they would like to see. We didn't offer them options or, you know, I get the yellow dot thing, that makes it easier for people, but I also think they should be able to see, "Yeah, this is what I would like to see here if it's something that we're not offering them in a dot." Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Yeah.
So if, just to kind of clarify, you like the idea that we give people a list of candidate uses, but then maybe for each station, we give people Post-its so that they can write up anything?
Yep.
I like that.
Yep. And the other comment I had was, because a lot of people can't attend these meetings, but there's a lot of, a lot of voices out there constantly on Facebook, putting on Facebook what they want to see in Whitmore Lake, especially in the downtown area. I'm wondering how we can capture those comments and use them, you know, as a guide to use for the meeting. I don't know, other than printing them off, or how can we do that? Because I want everybody to participate, even if they can't attend.
I do too. So one of the things that I've discussed with actually the supervisor was possibly leaving these exhibits up, which I wanted to get Planning Commission's feedback on. So if we make, make these displays that people can provide feedback on, perhaps we could put them in the lobby for a week, which would allow people to kind of provide feedback at other times?
If we can just snag all those comments off of the posts, can we just bring those? Like, print them up and bring them in?
Where are you seeing, are these on your Facebook page, or are these on Township Facebook page?
There's like four Whitmore Lake or Northville Township websites. There's Northville Area News, there's Northville Area, I'm sorry, Northville Area News, Northville Township Supports Growth, Whitmore Lake, and Whitmore Lake What's All The Noise, I think is the fourth one. And everybody's constantly putting on there, "This is what I'd like to see in this area." I mean, I think those, because these are people that don't get to come into the township. You know, even if you leave them up in the lobby, they don't get to come in. So how do we get those voices heard here?
I'm just kind of thinking this through. One of the, you know, I would like to create transparent public process, and I'd be weary that there was, it would be challenging just to go through, you know, a Facebook page and find everything, and then if we- page and find everything, and then if we didn't find something that was important to one resident that they posted, but found something that was important to another resident that they posted, how would we kind of justify that process? So what I could suggest possibly is that we pull comments that, you know, from those pages, and then put those on a board for people to see and ask them to react to it. We say-
It's mostly, yeah, it's mostly people making lists. Like, I'd really like to see a really nice restaurant, I'd really like to see, like, shops, mom-and-pop shops, I'd like to see Tim Hortons come in. It's just like one line after another of what they'd like to see in the township.
So, so Mr. Lippens, just to clarify though, you would need those by the next meeting, correct?
Well, yeah, we would have to do that.
You want them inclusive on the public input meeting, which is next meeting?
Yeah, we would have to come up with an idea that we wanted to implement, and then we'd have to put it together and present it at that meeting, which is totally doable. That's what we're talking about.
It is possible?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in the interest of transparency, people's names are on there, so. It's not like, well, people can make several suggestions if they want to.
Mr. Dwyer had question?
I wonder how popular this open house is going to be, or how enthusiastic, engaged the people are going to be, but I'd hate to truncate it early when we finally do have some good input, because we've got other things on the agenda, so I would concur that that thing should be kept completely clear and give priority to anyone that wants to speak or engage with us.
Thank you. Ms. Infante?
I'm assuming also that we could not convene in another-
Excuse me, Ms. Infante, use your microphone. Thank you.
We all shared the desire to expedite a decision for that individual, but I, I agree with what everyone else is saying, and I'm also assuming that we could not meet in another space and still be in line with the Open Meetings Act. Am I right? Yeah, that's what I mean, that's, that's what I'm asking. So we couldn't be somewhere else and then make up our fifteen minutes of meeting so that it is not delaying the entry of people, and then we would, after those fifteen minutes, assuming that everything was in-
I think at this point, it's pretty clear that the commission would like to back off the item that we're speaking of, so.
Yeah, I, I do agree, it's just unfortunate.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Kuzno?
Could we meet earlier? Could we meet at six forty-five as a, as a commission and take care of business and then open up our, our other meeting?
Uh, Mr. Lippens?
It's a matter of being posted, I guess, maybe if it's a public meeting, it needs to be posted, but what's the, what would be the problem with that?
I mean, I think you could. I think you just have to post it in, you know, in the Township Hall and on the website, and essentially you could say, regular meeting at six forty-five, special open house starts at seven. I think that that would be perfectly fine, assuming that we can get it videoed and like our normal practices.
Okay, is, I'm going to go through each member. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah.
Mr. Equinell?
Yes.
Ms. Chick? Mr. Dwyer?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we can do that?
I think that's a good suggestion. Of course, it's contingent on us getting a site plan for you to review.
Correct.
I think we can do that.
And you'll know by that, that time?
Yeah.
Thank you. So we can accommodate both then? So any, I, I do have a question regarding the scope of the, of what you have, the tentative schedule. Back earlier this year, when we were basically cookbook-ing what we were going to look at for the master plan review, I believe the non-motorized plan was not included. And that was, I, I think that if I, if I remember right, without going back to my, to the minutes or the notes.
There was-
So how, at this point, you know, because we were, at that point, we were looking at getting the approval from the Board of Trustees on the budget, the amount, and there, there was an amount that came up. And as I recall, and maybe you can clarify, Mr. Lippens, that the non-motorized plan was not part of that. Am I correct?
I, I'm trying to remember, but I believe that it was the land preservation part that was not part of it.
So-
The open space preservation.
The open space preservation now appears also. So either one, one or the other, or both?
It does.
We're not, we're not inclusive of the budget that was allotted by the Board of Trustees, so is that, are we currently staying within those bounds of what was approved for this master plan review? That's my question.
We are, and the explanation is that in looking at the township's priorities, both of those items were priorities, so we reduced the fee, so that both could be done within the same fee.
Okay, because if that conversation went on with the Board of Trustees, it didn't reflect back to the Planning Commission. That's my point. So is that correct, Ms. Chick?
Yes.
It is?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Chick?
I do have a question about the non-motorized plan. When you're saying including specific policies, what kind of policies are you thinking about?
Well, that's the, that's, I think, why we were able to reduce the scope, because the, the plan should include, based on state law, completes, it should address complete streets.
Okay.
So what we would do is include general descriptions of what types of facilities accommodate pedestrians, bicyclists, include a map that shows the new non-motorized trail, and also is consistent with the Watts Plan. So between the time when we, we started, say, the Downtown Plan, and now there's a Washtenaw County Plan that was concluded by the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study.
Right.
And so now we have that as a, an input as well. So we would be doing basically a description of what facilities accommodate, some policies about how to approach creating those facilities in the township, and a map that describes some low-hanging fruit recommendations.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Equinell?
So will your map include tying in to the Livingston County non-motorized pathway, as well as going down through Barker for that pathway as well? And then going around the lake to the Livingston County?
Um, yes, and I think that that is why it made sense to include this, because there are some, you know, really good ideas that are, you know, widely known, and also that we have done some public engagement already that supports them. When we did the downtown planning, we heard about the connection through the North Village Site, down through Barker Road, and into the Livingston County Trailway. And that's just, it's a, it's a recommendation that we should just make in the, in the master plan. So we didn't want to lose the opportunity on this update to do that. And, you know, we've also heard that land preservation's a very important item to many residents in the township, and we think that that should be addressed as well. And the Board does as well. So we talked about this with the Board, and it was authorized.
Ms. Chick?
I remember, and I don't know if it was with the last master plan that we did, or maybe it was that when we were doing the charrettes and the open house for the master plan, that we were talking about cluster developments. And I remember seeing a map where we had some on there already, but I, I don't know if, it might be old and gone. So could you explain, so to people out there in the Planning Commission, what a cluster development is, like, how many units are typically in a cluster development, and what's the purpose?
Well, a cluster development essentially is allowing for new housing to be built in closer proximity than otherwise would be required or permitted by the underlying zoning district to preserve open features and natural features. So for instance, a site that had a significant wetland or woodlands area, that area could be preserved, and if that site was required to develop one unit per five acres, and it was a twenty-acre site, they could have four units rather than one actually split up in, you know, like a checkerboard with one on, one checker on each five units. Those could be sighted all together with the open space. And actually, the Northville Township zoning ordinance does permit clustering, and it permits density bonuses for certain features being preserved. And what that would mean is, say, you were able to preserve a wetland and a high-quality woodland and provide access to those spaces for the public or for people who live in that subdivision or cluster development, you might be able to have six units, one-hundred-and-fifty percent, rather than four on that site. That would be a fifty percent bonus.
I mean, I'm glad you clarified it. It's not a new concept as far as our zoning ordinance goes. Several years ago, we spent a great amount of time developing the open space development plan that we have, so you're not proposing any great changes in that, that you're just more clarifying and providing more layout and graphics for the, for the master plan? Is that your, is that what your point is, Mr. Lippens? You're not going to adjust the language per se, it's more of a clarification issue?
Correct. It's, it's a good strategy, since natural features preservation is, is a goal that we want to do, is use the master plan to include some, you know, good practices like cluster developments. The other one that we listed as an option to explore is transfer of development right, which can be done through the PUD process. But that is, the transfer of development rights essentially would, through someone who, say, could develop at, you know, one housing unit per five acres, chooses to preserve that whole site, and then transfer some of those development, development rights to a neighboring site that maybe doesn't have any, uh, natural features on it at all, and is maybe closer related to an RTO road that could handle new traffic. You know, of course, we have to explore the feasibility of this, but in Michigan, the PUD authorization does permit for some creative options using transfer, to implement a transfer development right policy.
It's more on a general township-wide basis is what, what you're, what you're proposing. Any other questions for Mr. Lippens? So at this point, we know that possibly we will meet and address the People's Express site plan, possibly before the next meeting, leaving this entire time open for the, for the master plan. What is, what are you calling it, a meet-and-greet? Is that one, or, excuse me, open house, rather? And I think Ms. Chick reflected, you know, having alternatives to what the items that you listed, so I think that's also, should be inclusive. And is there any other comments from the commissioners regarding what we're going to cover? Mr. Kuzno?
Back to Ms. Chick's question about Facebook posts and stuff like that. Does the township have a Facebook page and/or bulletin board that people could go to electronically and post ideas, especially if they have, if they are citizens of the township, so they could put in their address, whatever it is, something, or create an account? Is there anything like that we have right now?
The township has its own website, they would actually have to create something on there that people could go to. Is there, there used to be something where people could just put their comments in. It wasn't very successful. I don't know, people are aware of it, I don't know if everybody's aware of it, but I don't know that it was something you could, actually, you didn't have to put your name in, you could make it anonymous, so.
Well, we want comments from people that are pertinent to our township.
In the township, right.
I don't want just some radical throwing in some stuff, now, hey, I'd like to have a fire hydrant in every corner or something like that.
Right. I'm just trying to think, well, maybe you have an idea, way more people can participate.
And also, there's also the, you have to consider Ms. Chick is the, the time, the timing, timeframe of that, and when it can be submitted adequately in time to make, to reflect any, any impact. So, I mean, we're talking two, two weeks from today. I don't know how quickly your suggestion could, could work. Mr. Lippens?
Yeah, I mean, I like the suggestion. I think certainly, as we prepare exhibits, you know, we'll go and look through comments. I, I can't guarantee that we'll capture every comment, you know, so for residents that like to provide input that way, you know, we can't guarantee that that's a process to have your voice heard in the master plan process. The best way to do that is to come to this open house, or to come to a regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting and speak to the Planning Commission during the public comment period. Also, you know, Planning Commission does receive communications every month. People can write a letter to us, and we can receive it through communications. And, you know, Planning Commissioners, if you find something that's valuable on a social media post, you can submit it to Planning Commission as communication as well, and we can encourage that as part of the process. So I do think there's value in social media. I know that there are important discussions that are happening, and we do want to consider that. I just think that we have to, we have to view that through the frame of a Planning Commissioner that's raising that, those issues with the Commission, or possibly through this public event that we're doing. You know, so I guess my, you know, my best idea was for us to review it, see if there are any interesting quotes that we'd like to include, and put those on a board for people to review, or some other method. And similar to that, I would say Planning Commissioners, anybody who wants to email me something they find on public, on social media, you know, even a screen clip that you think we should include or look at at the event, if you can do it in the next week, I could try to incorporate that as well. I like the idea, I think it would be fun.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Infante?
I think that finding a new way perhaps to enhance the correspondence is really important, and I know we're not the most exciting people in the world, and not everybody can make it. But I, I have a real concern about the authority behind this, because we're representing the, the residents, and it's their agency to contribute their voices by whatever means. And I'm worried that if we select particularly pertinent, in our opinions, posts that we're taking the agency, and I just think it clouds the issue of authority in ways that I, I just worry would be problematic.
Thank you.
I didn't understand that. Sorry. What's problematic? Us taking information in, or us not taking information?
We selecting from posts, rather than the people who, it's their agency, they're the ones who are supposed to be corresponding with us. In other words, I just worry that it looks like we're selecting what we feel is most pertinent, and maybe it isn't. It should be the public that is contributing via whatever medium we have, and perhaps we have a very ineffective one, so that I actually agree with. But I just worry if we, some Facebook posts are, they might even seem favored over other Facebook groups. I just think it's problematic.
So I guess my, my suggestion was, I'm not saying for this next meeting, I, I don't think that's realistic, but I'm saying if we had a mechanism for having public comment, whether it be our, our own Facebook-
it be our own Facebook page at the township, whatever it is, great. I kind of agree with that. It's like, why are we fishing for stuff out there? We've invited you to come. If you want to come, come. If you don't want to come, don't come. And you can come every other week if you want to come, because we're here every weekend. Look at all the people, there's plenty of chairs. So, I mean, I don't think it's a real issue to try to be fishing out there for stuff that's, we're not looking for stuff to, you know-
Correct, yeah. And the emphasis is the biggest impact on your opinion is to come to meetings or to correspond direct, or, and in this case, come to the open house, so the Facebook things are not as definite as doing the other items. So, I agree with Ms. Infante.
Yeah, my concern is just that there are people out here who can't come to the meetings, and they don't have, I've, there's really good people out there with good ideas, I hear it all the time, see it all the time, and they actually apologize, "I'm really sorry, I can't come to the meeting. I'd like to come and speak, but I can't." So, I don't want to ignore them because they have a voice.
Not being ignored, just, if, I guess, my point is, is that if you're committed enough to have an opinion, then make it heard through the proper known channels, and it'll definitely be heard rather than not. Mr. Iquinto?
You know, this is important to us, we prioritize it, we are all busy, but it's important, so we prioritize it and we make the time to be here as commissioners to serve the community. Residents, if it's important to you, you have to come and do the same. We want to hear input, and we listen, but you have to come to an opportunity such as the open house to be able to share what your vision is and what you would like. Yes, you have to sacrifice a little of your time, but if it's important enough to you and it's priority, please do so, because we really would appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Just one last quick point. At quite a bit of expense and time and effort and energy, we've used surveys to get information from as broad a span of the public as possible. They're not the best instruments, for sure, but we really are trying, so we can definitely do it better, but, yeah, come to the meetings.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lippens, on this?
Um, yeah, I think I would echo the conversation. I agree with all the points, really. You know, sometimes we'll do same program in person and do an online survey or an online version of that as well. I know that the township has done a lot of surveying in the past that we could use as part of this, too, go back to past data. So, that wasn't specifically a part of the plan for this, but it certainly could be considered, and it can be done pretty effectively. So, you know, we're developing this program of information that we want to get feedback on in person, and we can see how that goes, and Planning Commission can discuss if you want to do online, or if we're satisfied that we got a good turnout. It's, you know, the process has started, and if we stay on schedule and finish when we want to, early next year, I think that's, that's the main, the main thing we want to focus on.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I forgot, did we only allow for one open house or one workshop, or was it two?
It, so, we have planned one, but we could also add additional public workshops as well. We have some flexibility to consider that as we go.
Mr. Kuzno?
I'm kind of a, if it ain't broke, don't fix it kind of guy, and I, it's also, sometimes it feels like a lot of the stuff we do is change for the sake of change, and it's, I don't really adhere to that philosophy necessarily. And I just, I mean, these things are great. I just wonder how many, how many people show up wondering what they could do on, "I'd like this on somebody else's property, I'd like this on somebody else's property, I'd like this on somebody else's property." It's like, that's kind of what we're opening ourselves up to in one sense, in regard, too. It's like, I don't necessarily think that's great either, so I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. This, this review, this master plan update, I don't think is as comprehensive as the one that we've had past, in the past, the most recent one, so a little more narrowed in scope than that one was, and we'll determine as we go if it's adequate, as we go through the process, I believe.
Yeah, we are, and it's an attempt to verify the policy direction that was established in many cases in the last plan with some specific issues in areas that we're looking at. But I would say, you know, particularly with our approach to the verification or validation of the previous goals, at the workshop, you know, I'd like to show people what the goals are and just get feedback, but I think that what we want to do is validate the goals of the last plan and make sure that those are indeed what we still want to work on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I guess we're pretty clear about how to proceed for next meeting, although the next, in the next upcoming months, with the, with this, not only the master plan update items and the zoning ordinance revision, we're gonna, and any regular business that comes up, we gotta, we'll have a full load.
That's right.
To say the least, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lippens.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 12, approval of minutes. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of September 19th. Dispend with reading, supported by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it. Final call to the public. There's no one. Comments from commissioners? We'll start with Ms. Infante.
None, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
Yeah, if I could return to People's Express briefly, if I may. As a self-described expert on millings and staging areas and such, I concur that that area is perfectly adequate for current parking, is perfectly adequate with minor grading for future paving. And I understand that millings may not be suitable in this district, or allowed in this district, and I understand the precedent of allowing it such that future applicants may think importing millings into such an area would be adequate. But if there's a way for us to navigate around all that and make this happen, I would be in favor of that. But I would encourage the applicant to present what the intent is at current, not what future plans are, all that's great additional information, but not to confuse the two.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I just want to thank the Parks and Rec for the trailway, and I thank all the volunteers that participated in doing that for the township. That was very nice.
Thank you. Mr. Iquinto?
No, thanks, sir.
Mr. Kuzno?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to announce the next regular meeting, October 17th. It will be the, at seven o'clock will be the open house, so please attend if you're able, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.